Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order for December 8th, 2021. Now with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, town administrator, weekly update?
So I know that we have the election coming up next week, and I think that I'm probably the happiest about that because we have so many things pending that we're putting off. I'll remind you that we have got to get through this transfer station superintendent position. One of the reasons that we've had so many executive sessions is because you have to review the applications as they come in. They're not public documents. We also have the office assistant position open. We've gotten some resumes, met, chatted with some people. We have got to fill those positions. We are short-staffed, and it's showing. So that's definitely going to be an item next week in an executive session for the new selectmen to look at these applications and you guys to have some conversations and hopefully help us move forward. The Acton-Chapley Youth Corps was in today, and they wanted you to have a copy of their annual reports. Consider it delivered. Usually I go over the names of ballot clerks with you just to make sure that you don't have a conflict that I might have missed. I ask everybody the same questions, if they're immediate family members of anybody on the ballot, and if they have any financial gain or financially supported. Sheila Conway serving as a morning warden, Don Van Syndrome. Or let me rephrase that. Don Van Syndrome morning warden, Sheila Conway the evening warden who will oversee the counting, Robert Sabelli and Shailene Gouvaro, Jeanette Burst, Anne McKeckren, Deb Robinson, Tammy Crampset and Sabelli, Virginia DeBoer. Shailene, Tammy, Cheryl Drisco and Deb Robinson are going to count. Depending on what the day looks like, I may or may not bring in two more counters. Just remember, we're hand-counting, and we have to count each lot of 50. So it might take a little longer, so I may bring in two more. But if any thoughts or concerns, something I might have missed, ask them all, short of doing that. A whole lot more I can do. Take their word. Public notice that the board needs to be aware of is that the Acton Planning Board has scheduled a public hearing for Thursday, December 16th, to discuss the conditional use for Seth McCoy Trucking and Escavating. The meeting will be before the planning board meeting. It's map 207, Lot 1. So, public hearing on the 16th. Land uses notifying the butters. And I believe they have a site walk scheduled on the 11th, if that's a Saturday. Yep. So, all posted on the website. Foreclosure notices are going out next week. They're impending foreclosure notices, meaning you still have 45 days to pay the taxes before the town takes ownership. Currently, we have 15 names on the list. On June 30th, June 30th, 2021, you appointed Tina Burns as a rec committee member. It's an appointment, not an elected position. She has failed to be sworn in. We have sent letters, we've made every attempt. We're going to mark it as, you know, the individual changed her mind and filed it away. The rec already had openings, but this will add to it. Same goes true with Ken Allen Cemetery Committee Member. You appointed him on July 29th. And both of these appointments come at the request of the person. The board certainly doesn't seek them out. They came to us, asked them. Same thing, we're sending letters, mail's being returned. We just haven't gotten any response, so. Sheriff's Department sent you their breakdowns for the quarter. A couple of copies, if you want to look at them. We'll go through the notable events as we normally do. Sorry. This is for November. The first one is leaving the scene of a crash on Murray Road and Dearing Ridge Road in Chapley. Next was a violation of condition of release. This was Silver Lake Road in Chapley. Operating after suspension, an individual from Sanford was charged with OAS in Chapley. Domestic violence arrest. An individual from Chapley on Green Ghost Road was charged. 11:21 later in the month. 28-year-old from Acton was, had been, 28-year-old from Acton essentially was caught up with on a warrant that was outstanding since March of 2020. That was a domestic violence warrant. Same day, there was a head-on crash with a dirt bike on Gray Road in Chapley. Next is just a training. I'm sorry, I haven't read these in advance, and I just want to make sure I don't inadvertently say a name, although it is a public document if anybody wants to see it. During the week of the 15th, the Sheriff's Department hosted training on traumatic stress management. 20 officers attended, including our deputy. And on the 23rd, deputies responded to a Chapley residence, individual that was threatening suicide. They were able to transport him without incident. Later, the same day, personal injury crash on Emory Mills Road in Chapley. And then on the 28th, an overdose in Chapley. So with the conversation of Chapley, oh, not Chapley, excuse me, with the conversation of the deputy, kind of off key a bit, but I did ask David permission to just update you as a town of Acton on the meeting that we had with York County Sheriff's Department. Kim, I hope this is okay with you?
It's fine.
So if you saw the posting, you saw that the Acton selectmen and Chapley selectmen, the York County Sheriff's Department and the county manager all met last Thursday to talk about what we were going to do now that our contract deputy Greg Sevigny was promoted to sheriff. We are still in the contract until November of 2022. And essentially, what it comes down to is two things. The Sheriff's Department is extremely shorthanded. They can't fill their regular shifts. They can't fill their regular shifts, their regular patrols. They certainly are having a very difficult time filling contract deputies. And understandably, it's not a priority to them because they've got the entire county to cover, and they had, I believe they said, six to eight open positions just for regular deputies to patrol all of York County. With that being said, what they're doing now is they are posting the job in-house. And I did speak to Sergeant Chavet today. He stopped by for something else, and he confirmed the job is posted. We're going to post it for two weeks. They're going to come back to us with names of individuals that may be interested. Both towns in the past have been part of the interviewing process. As the Sheriff's Department has always felt that the towns are best suited to help choose a deputy that might serve best in Acton and Chapley. But what comes with that is the tier that he or she may be being paid at. So if, and this is just fictitious numbers, but if Deputy Sevigny, for example, was hired at a tier three, and we went to the voters in both towns with a tier three salary, and the only person interested in the job is a tier five, then that means that Acton and Chapley are going to have to come up with a difference in money because we asked for X amount of dollars, and the way we line item budget and the way the warrant article is written, we're not going to have the authority to exceed that. However, Michelle did tell me in conversations with her that because of the timing between when Shaw left and Sevigny left, that there may be a little bit of a buffer there, but certainly not to cover. Their estimate, and this was just an estimate, was $12,000 to $14,000 difference per town. So the conversation, once they come back to us with who may be interested, and we start looking at numbers, one of two things is going to happen. The towns are either going to agree to dissolve the contract and just let our county tax cover Acton and Chapley like it did before we started the contract deputy, and the rest of the money will essentially go back to the general fund. Or they'll come to the voters and see if they want to come up with a difference of money to see the contract out through November of 2022. In any event, what's probably going to happen at the end of November 2022 is that we expect the Sheriff's Department is going to dissolve the contract deputy program. They're just too short-staffed to dedicate somebody to the towns. And they're sorry, certainly not what they intended. And it's not final yet, but that's preliminary of how it looks. Sound accurate?
No, that's, I mean, we, we both towns, we talked about it. And, you know, we had quite a discussion about it. And, you know, really, at the end of the day, the county manager pretty much said that, you know, we will try to do our obligation, but if we do it, we may have to use different deputies. It won't be in the Acton-Chapley car. It'd be in their own, you know, personal ones that they usually use.
I think, wasn't that before they agreed to post it? Because the way I understand it from speaking to Chavet now is that it's posted for just.
Well, they said that we're going to post it, but if nobody takes a spot. And the issue they're really having is they're saying, we want to finish out the contract. It's just whether or not we can get somebody to sit in the Acton-Chapley car.
And if the town wants to pay the difference. And then the other thing is the little bit, you know, if you sat through the meeting, you kind of felt like, I mean, you find, feel a little, you know. I mean, to take away, when he was telling us how many people he had to patrol all of York County, you felt a little guilty about taking someone away to fulfill the contract. I mean, we're 11 months out, if you will, so. But once we get more information, I have to believe the board is going to bring it to the public and kind of get some ideas, and we'll look at exactly how it was budgeted. I know that Chapley's town meeting is coming up, but it sounded like a majority of the selectmen in both towns were probably going to be okay with dissolving it. But nothing is in stone. But right now, so we just have regular coverage, and our bills are being prorated before anybody asks from the county. So we're not being charged right now. And Michelle is keeping a close eye on those.
Yeah, because if we were to be charged right now, we'd be charged on the overtime because you'd have to pull somebody off another run in overtime, so.
They gave us 14 days' notices, which is what the contract required. If there were going to be any changes to the contract, the Sheriff's Department was required to give us 14 days' notice, which they did. The sheriff certainly tried everything that he could. I mean, they're in a serious hiring. They have a serious hiring problem, so. To be continued, but that's where we're at with that. It doesn't mean we don't have coverage. We want to make sure that it's clear that we still pay our regular county taxes. You can still call 911. You can still call and ask for the person covering Acton. It's just not a dedicated deputy, but somebody is always covering all of York County, the towns that they're committed to. Christmas tree lighting went off on Saturday without a hitch. Special last-minute thanks. We know that Kim Stacy delivered the tree. There have been so many rave reviews and comments on the tree. Everybody wanted to know where they could find it. Dave also saved the day late Friday before the tree lighting was going to happen. We had some problems with getting the lights on, the tree. We had, the rec had some issues with personnel and who was supposed to do it. So Dave was able to reach out to an electrician that came out Saturday and put them all up beforehand. So between the two of them, the tree got decorated.
Thank Mr. Norman there for taking care of us.
He asked me not to mention his name because he doesn't want any calls. He doesn't have any time for work.
I'm sorry.
But yes, Craig is a good guy, and he helped us out. Couple people have asked me about tree pitchers, Christmas tree pitchers. I don't go to, don't normally go to these events, but what usually happens is the rec brings them in. So as soon as we get them, we'll post them online so you can come and get them. But as of now, I don't have any. Last thing I wanted to mention is the state is doing their biannual push for unclaimed property. There are a lot of people in the town of Acton that unclaim property. I found, I think, three for Kimberly. David, sorry, David, you don't get any. I tried to do random names of people and then try to make phone calls and stuff, but, you know, they have to be posted on there for so long, and then they become ownership of the state. So even if they're minimal amounts, you know, these are small bank accounts that you had for the kids and never closed them out and moved, you know. But it adds up. I mean, there's, you know, I think it was $260,000 statewide. So just Google state main unclaimed property. You can put, you have to put a last name in. If you put a town in it, it narrows the searches. And check it out, because you may be on there. That's all I have.
Okay, I guess, warrant and bills?
All signed.
All signed, good.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that, all in favor? Minutes of the last meeting.
All right, minutes of the last meeting. I want to make a motion to approve the minutes of November 17th and December 1st.
I'll second that, all in favor? Okay, department head committee chair updates. C9, I guess we'll go down to old business, salt bids.
All right. Of course, we have a little weather on the night that we're ready to move forward. We can put it off till next week, or you can make an executive decision. But as, to catch us up, we knew that Mary Ann at Southern Maine Development was trying to get us a better number because they didn't make the cog. Second place person, which was Morton Salt. They agreed to give us our salt at $63.55. We haven't used them for many years, but they were the second.
$63. what?
$63.55 a ton.
What was the other, what was the original price? So 68, right?
Well, so this is what happened. So in the cog, Granite State bid $60, $60. They won through the cog for $60. When we reached out to them, they sent us a bill for $68.23. So when we said, hey, no, wait, we're in the cog, we want that price, that's when they started saying, well, your publishers didn't, they didn't tell us how much salt they wanted. We didn't include them in it, we didn't include them in our quote. You know, at this point, the numbers have gone up so much, we just can't offer you that. Mary Ann went back and forth to see if she could force them into it, if you will, as a member of the cog, and she couldn't because the guys just didn't reply to the email saying that they wanted to be considered for X amount of tons. So she's been working on it. We've used Granite State for, I'm going to say, at least 10 years, but it's $5 more.
14 years or so.
Yeah, so it's $68.23, but she worked really hard to get Morton to approve their cog bid for the town of Acton. I don't know if anybody knows anything about them, if we want to ask the guys, but it is $5 cheaper a ton.
Well, I think we're pretty much, that's really the only option we've got at this point.
Do we, have we ever used them that you know of?
I believe so. I'm sure we have. They're out of Portland, I believe.
Eastern, not eastern, yeah, Morton, Morton Salt. Do you want me, I know they have a, they have salt down there. Do you want to ask them just to make sure they don't have any concerns with it and put it off one more week? Or do you want to just award it?
Well, I think probably the biggest question is, is can they wait another week?
Right.
I mean, we've got, we, between this storm and, and the night, and then Saturday, they're talking about ice in the morning. So, I mean, I believe Sanford uses Morton. They're a big company.
Why don't you take a five-minute recess, and I'll call them?
Yeah, we can do that. Want to take a five-minute? Yeah.
Five-minute recess, all right.
I'm going to take a few minutes. I believe they're all sanding right now.
Good.
They say where I want to come through. It's supposed to get icy. We had a bit of snow down in a fair, I was working today. There was about three inches of snow in Saco today.
Well, they said closer to the ocean it's supposed to go.
We came up, checked parking lots up in Sanford. I didn't see anything on the ground.
Like some nice snow before Christmas.
I can do without it. All trees for Christmas would be great.
Still on?
We still on, right? Yep.
All right, so I spoke to both William and Adam, and they're both fine with the Morton Salt. They did ask if you had any concerns with your experience as, as work commissioner, and I told them that you didn't. I think salt is salt, and they appreciate the $5 less a ton, and appreciated calling them so that they could possibly get it ordered. So I guess we'll be looking for a motion for Morton Salt, $63.55 a ton, please.
We make a motion to accept the Morton Salt bid at $63.55 a ton.
$63.
$63.55?
It's highlighted.
Geez, I'm crum.
All right, we'll try that again. Going to make a motion that we accept the bid for Morton Salt for $63.55 per ton.
I'll second that, all in favor? Okay. We're down to North Star contract.
So last week, you guys verbally approved a North Star contract. There were a couple of typos with the change of the planning board meeting and one other grammatical thing we found just needed to sign. You actually approved it last week, but I'm looking for a signature on the contract page.
We approved that because they had a meeting, they needed it.
Yeah, yeah. And the prices had gone up $10 an hour, which, you know, wasn't terrible, but yeah, just signatures.
Just expected at this point. We're down to new business, freedom of information.
I apologize, I kind of shortened that out more than I probably should have, but that is freedom of information. Just have one to put before you tonight. This is in accordance with made freedom of information laws formally requesting the following information. DVD copy of the following selectman meetings. December 1st, 2021, December 1st of 2019, August 12th of 2010, August 26th of 2010. DVD copy of the following town meeting, June 12th of 2010. Question came up, because these are on the town's website, can we tell them to go there and look? No. If we produce DVDs, it's something we do in-house. It's a policy that we have. The town has to create them, so that's not something that can be searched for. It will have to be done in-house, so we'll send it to the department head and get them done.
Even though it's up on the website?
On the website, because we produce the documents.
Oh, okay, so.
Is there an extra charge for the DVD?
Your current copying charge, your copying bills charge $5 for them. Mr. Corey generally puts as many as he can on one DVD, so I'm just trying to consolidate. Certainly something, another thing, once we get the new selectmen in, we need to start looking at the copying, the price list that we charge. You know, even though freedom of information only allows 10 cents a copy, we do often have people that come in and ask for copies, you know, and even at 25 cents, you know, between the toner, the paper, and you're hard-pressed to cover it. So we'd have to check the price of the DVD, how long does it take him hour-wise to actually produce it, copy it on there, so that all kind of needs to be figured in. But we'll add that to the project list.
Mike Corey's going to take care of most of that, then?
Oh, he's going to take care of all of it?
Okay.
We send him the list, he gets them on DVDs, and gets them to me, and we call a person. He comes, picks them up, pays for them, and everybody's happy.
B, budget timeline.
So this is a draft budget timeline. This was put together by the treasurer, so I just wanted to kind of go over it and talk about it. So the first one is the initial request due for all departments and social services, Monday, January 31st. So we get this out in the next few days, and that gives everybody almost a month and a half to get their budget together. Notice of potential ordinance articles due. This is just a notice that code enforcement needs to let us know by Friday, February 4th, how many different ordinances they're going to have forward. And this is really just a place marker piece so that we can start working on the warrant. We need to know how many articles there will be. There's a planning board public hearing on the zoning, Thursday, September 17th. Oops, a little typo. That's the public hearing that we follow the ordinance, notify everybody. The idea for that public hearing is so that people can give their input and offer any changes if they see fit. And the planning board agrees. Final ordinance articles due, so final writing perfectly how they're going to go on the warrant is Friday, March 4th. Warrant to be delivered to the Warren and Finance would be Friday, March 11th. So that gives us a week to do the last-minute typing of it. Final public hearing, zoning public hearing, would be Thursday, May 5th. Move that down. Warren and Finance recommendations. So our idea is, is that if we give the warrant to the Warren and Finance on Friday, March 11th, that we would have all the recommendations by Friday, April 27th. So that gives them, how, six, six to seven weeks, which I think is what we've kind of worked with in the past. It's kind of worked out. If the final ordinance is due on the 4th, and they're all typed and formatted properly, we could almost get it to you right away the next day, so. So the recommendation's due by Friday, May, April 27th. Selectmen to sign the warrant on Wednesday, May 11th. So that gives us about a week to get the recommendations typed in. Then absentee balloting starts, state and local election, Tuesday, June 14th, and then town meeting on Saturday, the 18th. Thoughts?
Let's get to it.
Ask the sheriff if he feels like that's enough time.
Yeah, please.
I believe it's enough time. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to fix those couple of things. We'll get it sent out to everybody tomorrow, so check your email. And I'll put hard copies in the box, too, for your meeting coming up.
Drummond and Woodson letter.
This came certified, and it is a few paragraphs, but I'm going to read it to you because it's ongoing and it's addressed to the town and to David as the chair. So this is from Drummond Woodson, Leah Racham. I represent the Square Pond Improvement Association. The purpose of this letter is to respond briefly to a letter Mrs. Rue dated October 26th from Judith Camasso, Commissioner of the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. In her letter, the commissioner expressed certain concerns regarding the replacement of the culvert plan for West Shore Drive. This letter just recently came to my client's attention, and I have been asked to reach out to you in order to address the concerns. As you may be aware, I wrote an opinion letter to my client dated October 12th regarding West Shore Drive and the related issues. It's my understanding that it was forwarded to your review and consideration. It'd be referenced as October 12th, the copy of which we have enclosed, and we had already received it. As a threshold issue, to extend, the commissioner is asserting that inland fisheries has the right to direct or control the replacement of the culvert because the state owns, A, the water and the submerged lands in the main great ponds, and B, all right title and interests in and to the lands, the center of the line. Such a position would be contrary to main law. As explained in the October 12th letter, the right to maintain, repair and replace town ways resides exclusively with the municipality in which they're located. The commissioner has not cited any legal authority that contradicts this well-established proposition. Neither the fact that the state of Maine owns the waters and lands in the Square Pond, nor that inland fisheries may own title to the center of the land, shows the legal reality that the town of Acton has sole authority to control the repair and replacement of West Shore Drive culvert for the issues identified in the letter. The state, like any other property owner, has the right to express its preferences, but ultimate decisions about the size of the culvert, materials used, timing, and all other related issues are firmly within the town's exclusive jurisdiction to decide. Given that there appears to be disagreement in this regard, we respectfully request that the town seek an opinion from its town attorney, given the importance of this. Because it's such a narrow issue, doing so should not financially burden the town. It is apparent that whatever is driving inland fisheries concern and its desire to increase boating access to Square Pond, which is why it's lobbying for a larger-sized culvert. Inland Fisheries has offered no evidence to suggest that the size of the culvert will impact public safety, or that the town's original plan to replace the culvert with one the same size will impact safety. As long as the replacement culvert is appropriately designed and engineered, maintaining its current size would not. is appropriately designed and engineered, maintaining its current size would not be perfectly safe. It would also be far, oh, would not only be perfectly safe, sorry. It would also be far less expensive and more fiscally responsible for the town. I look forward to your consideration. So do you want an opinion? I mean, where are we at? You know, do you want an opinion from your attorney? Are we going to wait till we get a little closer? I'm going to, I'm going to send this off to Will. I know there's some Square Pond people, but, I mean, do we believe inland fisheries? Are we, we're not at a point where we're letting them, you know, draw the lines anyways, are we? We got that one letter from them. We read it aloud, and we just acknowledged it, but we're not banking on them owning it, right?
No, no, I mean.
So do we need to do anything with this for now, or what are you thinking?
I think really.
I still would like to send it to our attorney. Sorry, but I'm, I just.
We can. I mean, I, I was kind of thinking.
I know, we're not in any rush or anything, but let's get it together.
We're sending it to the attorney to basically say, do you agree with inland fisheries, or do you agree with Leah Racham? Who, does the state have any rights in dictating the size, shape, everything that she listed out and everything that they indicate they have the authority over? Is that what we're asking them?
That's what I would like.
But at the same time, you know, like you said, you know, we can put back the same-sized culvert, or we can do whatever. It's up to the town to do it. I don't know how far along the road committee is on design or anything like that.
Well, that's the thing. Do we even know that they're going with a bigger one? Why spend legal money if they're going to put the same-sized one in?
That's what I was kind of getting to until we know. It's that way there, we can give them one shot. This is what we're proposing. Are we going to be able, is this going to be fine with, with inland fisheries? If they come back and say it's not, then then we get our legal opinion.
So what, if it's okay, I'll, let me have a conversation with Leslie and a conversation with Will, see where everything stands. I mean, and then we'll bring it back.
Nice to have some sort of idea where we're rolling with it before we go get any opinions, I think.
But it's good to have, at least you've got inland fisheries. Now you've got the Square Pond Association. That's who Leah Racham represents.
Yeah.
So I'll bring you an update back next week, and you can talk with the new selectman and decide. But I don't even know what timeframe they're at, if they're looking at budgeting for, for 2022, or.
Don't know.
All right, let me see what I can.
See if Leslie could come to our next meeting so we could talk to her about it.
Yeah, so we're probably going to be pretty inundated with the new selectman. We're going to have some lengthy executive sessions. We have to get through somebody's personal issues, so I was going to try to keep it a short agenda.
Well, maybe the first of the year. How's that?
Let me see where our timeframe is, as long as we're not, right away.
Yep.
Okay, I guess we'll go down to public comment. Public comment? See none? We'll go down to announce. Oop, you got something?
Nope, I'm just, just reading.
Okay, we'll go down to announcements there. 12:14, we've got an election, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. 12:15, Board of Selectmen, 6:00 PM. 12:16, Planning Board meeting and public hearing, 6:00 PM. 12:20, Warren Finance, 6:00 PM. 12:22, Board of Selectmen, 6:00 PM. Anything else? All good?
All good.
All right, motion?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second that. All in favor? Okay, good night.
Have a good night, everybody.